Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us for the City Council meeting and public hearing of October 27th, 2025 for the Alpharetta City Hall. And note, well, for those of you that are going by the printed agenda, we had quite a few changes, so I'll go through these right quick to make sure that you're not going to be sitting here for something that won't be heard this evening. The following items have been deferred by the applicant and will not be considered this evening. First item is Z-24-09/E-24-03/V-24-14 Wells Fargo Redevelopment, 21 North Main Street. That will not be heard this evening. PH-24-16 Road Abandonment on Manning Street. That will not be considered this evening. MP-25-08/CU-25-13/V-25-17 Hanover Winwood Park, Winwood Master Plan Pod 66 will not be heard this evening. Z-25-10/V-25-22 Levitan/75 and 91 Roswell Street will not be heard. Z-25-07CU-25-15/V-25-20 Alpharetta District Places will not be heard this evening, nor will MP-25-05/CU-25-07 North Winds Summit Vertiport. And the last referral will be PH-25-19 Alpharetta Capital Improvement Element, CIE. Amendment has been withdrawn by staff and will no longer be considered. So I'll note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for. Councilman Drutie, I don't believe will be able to join us this evening. And as always, we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next item up on our agenda will be the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the Alpharetta City Council meeting minutes from the meeting of October 20th, 2025. Ms. Shapiro, is there anyone who would... Oh, first I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to withdraw anything or remove from the consent agenda. Seeing none, Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on the consent agenda?
We do not for this item, sir.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak on the consent agenda, now's your chance. I see no one come forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Murk. And a second.
If anyone comes forward to close public comment, I have a motion.
That's kind of haunting.
Want to make sure everybody heard that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So next item up will be the public hearing. Announcement of public hearing procedures. Ms. Swine, would you please do the...
An individual requesting to be heard on a matter related to the purpose of a hearing must be recognized by the mayor before addressing the city council. Upon rising to speak, the speaker must identify himself or herself and furnish a home or business address before proceeding with any comments or remarks. The council will allow proponents a total of 10 minutes to speak in support of an application. Opponents will be allowed 10 minutes to speak in opposition. Comments are accepted first from the applicant, followed by persons speaking in favor, and then from those in opposition. Upon conclusion of any opposing comments or presentations, the mayor will allow the applicant to offer rebuttal if any time is remaining in the originally allotted 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. So the first item up in the public hearing is Z-25-09/PH-25-15 41 Milton Avenue. Director Cook, I believe you have this item.
The first item, the area is shown to you on the screen, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning and parking in Lufy's to convert a basement storage area into usable space for retail, restaurant, office, or residential dwelling. And it's on .132 acre property in the downtown. A rezoning is requested from C2 DTC, and parking in Lufy's is requested for up to three parking spaces. Property is located at 41 Milton Avenue. And this owner request is because he is also requesting the residential use. The C2 zoning would not allow the addition of a residential unit. The two-story mixed-use building on the property underwent a significant renovation in 2020. You can see the building here, right behind the tree. The former Alpha Theater Building, which contained a residential unit in the basement, was converted to a barber beauty shop on the first floor and a residence on the second floor. The basement area is approximately 1,000 square feet, so the C2 code allows a residential unit within, if it's an existing building, and it's supposed to be for the shop owner to live within that residential unit. The comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is central business district, which supports the applicant's proposal. The floor plan depicts 997 square foot basement area. I'll show you what that looks like. I've got this wrong. So this is, this is the basement area that the applicant is requesting to convert to an office. It already said office when they submitted for the, the plans for approval for the redevelopment. However, it was an office for the existing tenant, so Matthew, running the beauty shop, could also have his office in this location. So it wasn't for an outside business to have the office. So again, the request is to convert the 997 square foot basement area to retail, restaurant, office, or residential dwelling. The space does have access from an exterior door on the west side. I think you can see that in this picture here. So this is the area that's located on the west side that you would access the space. And there's also access from the elevators on the interior. And we did provide a table that shows the two to three parking spaces would be required for the conversion. Office would require three spaces. Other uses, like retail, would require two additional spaces. We also looked at traffic. Because of the, the small space, retail would generate 1 a.m. peak hour trip and 1 p.m. peak hour trip. Restaurant, if that was considered, would have the highest trips, generate the most trips with 11 a.m. peak hour trips and four peak hour trips. Office would generate 2 a.m. and p.m. would be two. And a forced sale dwelling, we estimated one for each of the peak hour. Within the downtown, parking can be met with parking located on the site, as well as on-street parking located adjacent to the site. If parking cannot be satisfied, then an applicant may pursue parking in Lufy's. Parking in Lufy's allow parking requirements to be satisfied through a payment of fees, payments into the downtown parking fund. I did provide a schedule within the packet. One to five spaces would require 4,500 per space. And again, for an office, if an office was approved here, then three spaces would be required, a lump sum payment of $13,500 if they sought to, to seek a, a business license for an office use. We did look at the review criteria, and one is the availability of parking in the downtown overlay. And the Milton Avenue, besides the on-street parking, the closest facilities to the applicant's property are the Milton Avenue Parking Deck and the old Roswell Street Parking Deck. Milton Avenue Parking Deck is located within about 400 feet, which would be okay for walking distance for an office, and has one of the lower peak utilizations of 65%. However, Old Roswell Street, which is also in close proximity, has a high utilization We did look at the National Parking Association parking requirements. They recommend, or they state that parking designers typically use a maximum, maximum walking distance of 300 to 600 feet for retail customers and 1,200 to 1,500 feet for employee parking. And the two that I mentioned earlier, the Milton Avenue Parking Deck and the old Roswell, are about 450 feet from the site. We also looked at the availability of alternative transportation in the downtown overlay. There are five bus stops within about 1,000 feet of the property, two stops on Academy Street, three stops on North Main. We also looked at another consideration, which was deemed material to the application, is that the property is landlocked, excuse me, no available land to develop parking. Staff did review the applicant's proposal against the review criteria for a rezoning and parking in Lufy's. The proposal is consistent with the downtown master plan and future land use designation of the property. The request for parking in Lufy's is supported, was supported by staff for retail and office based on nearby parking. However, parking reductions were not supported by staff for residential uses in the downtown, nor was it supported for a restaurant. This item was considered at the October 2nd Planning Commission meeting. There were no public comments. After discussion, the commission recommended approval, subject to staff-recommended conditions, but they did add residential dwelling unit as a permitted use within the basement. The vote was unanimous, approval subject to seven conditions, which are within the staff plan, within the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Director Cook? Councilmember Brady?
So the space is residential, retail, or office. Have we ever given that designation to anybody else? That they have the freedoms to operate as a residential unit, as a retail and a restaurant? I just kind of look at that as like you live across the street, you know, thrives there, can thrive, could suddenly be a restaurant tomorrow, or suddenly be residential tomorrow under their, under their zoning? I'm just trying to understand.
No, that's, that's a good question, but we have not, Councilman, we have not placed where multiple uses. I mean, we, in the past, we've given retail approval and then limited it to specific retail, but not retail, residential, or office.
Is there any difference in those codes for residential, retail, and restaurant in that space, where life safety or fire safety codes come into play? Fire-rated walls, all those kind of things that we normally have based upon the particular use?
There are. And so if it was converted to residential, they would have to expand their sprinkler system. There are two ways of ingress and egress, so there's the side entrance along the side of the building. They also have access from the elevators, so they would meet those requirements for residential, but they would still have to fire rate the ceiling.
And for like a restaurant use in that space, is there, is it limited to have a kitchen in there? I'm just trying to understand how would you have a restaurant in that space?
Yeah, and, and the recommendation was not for a restaurant. That was not included in one of the recommendations.
Okay.
But, but you're right, there would be several changes to that building. You would have vents that would be coming out of the building also.
And how does the city kind of manage that process, if it changes from particular use to particular use, like fire-rated walls, it was residential, doesn't require that, but maybe the, the retail or, or something else does? How do you, how are you notified?
So if, if they sought a business license for the retail or the office, we'd have that notification. If they converted to a residential unit, we would not have that notification. That's something that they would have to come to us and tell us if that's going to be the use that's approved, and they're going to convert to residential, then they would be required to go through the expansion of the sprinkler system.
I'm sorry, going back to my first question, have we ever given that designation to any other space?
Not that I can recall.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hines?
So what's being asked is, the, the owner's asking to rent out the space for, it's not going to be owner-occupied space. Is that...
That's my understanding for the residential unit.
For, for any of it?
Oh, correct.
For office, I mean, if, if the owner was going to have an office, it's our understanding that he would just put his office there in, in his, in his building. But he wants to, this is a request to rent it out to somebody, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, number five talks about signage, and can you elaborate on how we envisioned the signage would work on, on whatever the use might be here? Do, do we determine anything about the signage? Is it all DRB? Are we granting a signage exception in this condition? Or has signage already been used on the building or not used on the building?
They would be allowed signage, but of course with signage, it goes by the tint, by the frontage of the space. But since this one is located through the walkway, the only way that we could measure would be to measure that walkway space, which is, is pretty small. So they would have to submit something to the design review board. Likely, it would be a hanging sign from chains that would be a small sign in this walkway area. Because I don't, I, you really couldn't put a blade sign. It's possible, but the property is so close to our, to the city of Alpharetta's property line, so a blade sign may go over onto adjacent property. So the only place that I see that you could put the, the additional signage would be in this area.
I'm familiar with situations where we create conditions and then the next commission has to deal with our condition. And if we have a condition about the signage, are we limiting what DRB can do or should do on signage? Are we telling them there, there, there can be where the signs can or can't go, or...
No, because I don't, I don't think condition number five tells them where it should go, but, but I think it tells them it cannot be like plastic channel letters or that we're recommending that it be more of a painted sign, something that's creative versus a typical applied plastic letters.
Now, in terms of the retail uses, there is a condition number two. Is that a staff condition, or is the verbiage in number two a planning commission condition?
So this wa, number two was the recommendation to planning commission from staff, but that could certainly be limited, so it's not all retail uses. It could be a clothing store versus an open retail use allowance.
Well, go ahead, please. No, go ahead.
The planning commission added to number one when they added the residential dwelling.
Okay. As to renting out residential in a downtown C2 commercial building, I know it's asking to be rezoned. Are we, do, do we have any other rentals in the downtown district residential where they're not providing for their own parking? I mean, it's, it's the business district, so...
No. No, we do not. This is the only one that I'm aware of.
I understand there, we have businesses that don't necessarily provide for their own parking, depending upon the history of the building, but I'm not aware of setting a precedent on residential not providing for its own.
You're correct.
Like, the, the property behind it, I think it was a, Mr. Rothman's property that's going to be built, the condos, they have to park their own cars on that property, is that correct?
That's correct.
So on the retail uses, it, what do we get with retail establishment, no mixed sales? Is that...
That's very open. I mean, that's, that could be any type of retail. Mixed sales, so this would be no mixed sales. Mixed sales would be more like a, like an antique, similar to like the Queen of Hearts that we had on Main Street, a donation center, that's when it's mixed sales. So this would be no mixed sales. So it could be a clothing store, vitamin shop, it could be hat store. I mean, it's, it's open to, to any type of retail.
And would you be looking, if council was receptive to retail use, would you be looking to us to define what those specified retail uses would be for DTC zoning? Because I'm not comfortable with retail establishment, so...
Right. So, so number two, as written, then it's open for the retail. It is not specific to a certain retail. I did look, because I had heard some concern, and so I put together, if council considered...
Can you slide that down a little bit?
Oh, sure.
There you go. Thank you.
If council, can you see that? Or is it too much?
It's on our screen, so...
Okay. If council considered retail, if you revise the condition, you could, you could revise it to say retail uses shall be limited to art gallery, bookstore, gift shop, shop or studio, which would be, have to be a craftsman or artist, like a jewelry maker, or clothing store. So this would limit it to specific retail uses.
And to be clear, if council went that direction and we rezoned it to DTC, all of the permitted and conditional uses, that would be set aside because the condition would be specified uses for that ground floor.
Correct. The, the conditions of zoning would overrule anything within the UDC that said it was permitted. And we do that regularly on a rezoning application. You may get rezoned, there may be 30 different uses allowed, but you will be subject to specific uses.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Director Cook? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro?
We do not have any public comments, but I believe the applicant is here.
I believe he is too. I saw him on the way in. If the applicant would like to come forward at this time, now's your opportunity.
And Matthew, if you don't, you have my own. Good job.
Okay. Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Matthew Corriari. I reside at 41 Milton Avenue. We will be celebrating our 25th anniversary in downtown Alpharetta. This is before paved roads came to Alpharetta. Since 2021, we moved our location from 10 Roswell Street to 41 Milton Avenue. That's where I have my hair salon, as well as my residence. We have a, about a, just short of 1,000 square feet available to us in our basement that was originally a residence. We are hoping and asking the council to allow us to utilize that space a bit better. I, I've talked and worked with the staff and do agree with what they have proposed. As far as the retail is concerned, I do want to ask the council to consider if we ever want to expand our business, our hair salon, there is no other space to go to, to allow us to expand into the basement for whether it's a barber shop or, or special need services. We do have a growing Muslim community in Alpharetta, and we constantly are asked whether we can provide privacy to perform services to, to, to potential clients. So that's something that I would ask you to consider as well. I'm open to any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Matthew. First of all, thank you for your investment in Alpharetta and your long history here. I'm just trying to understand the, the broad use.
I apologize. Would you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand the broad use. Because we, we've never given that designation, as we've heard from staff, to have residential office and retail. Is there, and, and in your presentation right now, you're talking about using it for retail, for an extension of your salon, is that correct? Or is it office, or is it residential? I'm just trying to understand which, which direction do you want to use? What is the use you want?
Initially, obviously, I don't have any tenants in mind. This whole process began with one of our, one of my friends from the Rotary approaching me about potentially serving coffee. That's how this process began. And I thought that as long as she can get the license, well, the city would be okay with it. Apparently, that, that was not the case, and that's how we began on this journey. I don't have anybody in mind. The reason I said office, I have had contractors approach us about providing a quiet area where they can meet their potential high-value clients, rather than in a restaurants or bar or somewhere, to have an office that they can meet somebody. That's how that came about. Personally, I think that would have less impact on me personally and, and my business. But if that's not, if you don't see it as a, as a good option, then I have to abide by that.
And let me give you a little more context, just in that for the, the thought process behind it, because where I'm, where I'm going is residential, right next to a hotel. Are you going to lease something for a night, for an extended stay? Is this a long-term rental, a short-term rental, Airbnb? All these things come up with residential.
Right.
So that's why I'm zeroing in all that.
I understand.
Is, is can we, you know, understand that in a different way.
And please forgive my naivety, I, I'm not familiar with city policies and, and laws. I initially was thinking that, again, through the holidays and whatnot, a short-term rental would be a benefit. But I understand there are other, other obstacles we have to overcome, separating it, fire, fire protection, and so on and so forth. So we may not go that direction, obviously. Off... Office is three parking spots, so that's a difference of $9,000 investment, additional investment versus 13.5. So that may not be available to me either, just based on finances. I've had people talk about a car shop, a gift shop, retail of some sort. Again, at this point, whatever I am, the lane that you provide me is the lane I'm going to operate on. Whoever rents it still has to go through the process of licensing and other stuff that has to be done anyway. So that's why I casted the big net initially.
Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you for being here, Matthew. This building has a long history with the city. We permitted the residents on the top floor for you to live there, which had not, at that time, been done before. We also worked with you on the sidewalk and putting in the Fulton County Water System in our, in our city's right-of-way, which we did for nobody else, and we worked with you there. And what I don't understand is, you've often complained about the parking downtown, but yet you're asking for an additional three spaces to come out of parking because you've complained that there's not enough parking in the front for your salon guests. So it's puzzling to me why you're asking for this. Can you help me understand that?
Absolutely. Well, parking, whether I'm there or not, parking is an issue. It's an employee issue. My major concern has always been handicap parking, because I do have an aging clientele. And although there are two handicap parkings available at Milton, one in front of Truck and Tap and one, believe, in front of Sisson Moon, they have to cross the street, excuse me, they have to cross the street to get to me. And I find, as I've been told by them, it's very difficult for them to, in fact, my mother was supposed to live with me, and she was on a walker and eventually on a wheelchair. For her, coming and living with me was almost impossible. So my concern has always been, yes, parking, everybody at downtown Alpharetta will complain about parking, as, you know. Things haven't gotten, 25 years ago, we had parking issues, let alone now. But my biggest concern, and what I've communicated with the, with the city, has been handicap parking.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Sit down.
You're free to sit down. We're going to ask for any public comment. And then if anyone does have the comments, then you'll have a chance to respond. You said we do not have any.
We do not have any for this item.
In advance. However, if anyone here would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance. I do not see anyone coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to approve Z-25-09/PH-25-15, 41 Milton Avenue, with the sole use at this time of office, and requiring three spaces to be paid for in lieu prior to a CO.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, yeah, Matthew. And again, I'm with everybody else that said thank you for what you've done in the city. You've been a, you know, a great business owner. We talk about, you know, 25 years, a long time in this town. You're right, there wasn't much pavement going out at the time. You're not being restricted on what you can do in that space. You're just being directed, as you said, whatever lane. But if you find an avenue, or somebody comes and says, hey, I got a retail idea that you really want to pursue, then come back and see us. But I think it goes back to what Councilman Brady said. We've never given this much latitude to somebody to walk around with a permission slip that says, I can do this if I want, I can do this if I want, I can do this if I want. The city loses the ability to, as I kind of heard, you know, if you switch it to residential, we may not even know it. That, that, you know, if there's no CO for residential, unless you're applying to the city for it. So I'm more comfortable with this. If it doesn't work, find a, find a use that you really are passionate about. You said nobody's come to you yet, or if the coffee person wants to pursue it further, and they're willing to put up the money to come back, I'm all ears. I'm here to help you, but I gotta do what's best for the city today. And for me, that is not putting out this broad, you know, permission slip that's just, that's from very different uses. So that's why I am where I am today. That's why I presented this, and that's why I'm voting that way.
Councilman Hypes?
Well, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim and then some. You know, it, when I hear and weigh this out, I believe that the specific designated uses for retail, specifically those presented by Director Cook, are, you know, to my way of thinking, you're asking for four different categories. If I had to choose for you, I probably would have chosen the specified retail. Because I happen to believe that if there is a boutique in your building that will attract people to come to your boutique for a very specific narrow line of merchandise or services, and then maybe that spills over to our surrounding businesses downtown, and everybody wins. You win, that store wins, our surrounding businesses. You know, for me, the office, you know, people will drive down there, park their cars, go in and work, and then drive home. You'll benefit as a landlord, and that's, that's good for you. And I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of spillover to our surrounding businesses. So, you know, I sort of like the targeted retail aspect of this. I certainly cannot get on board with rentals, long-term or short-term, in a commercial district, commercial building. And for those reasons, I, I mean, I would even be inclined to give you the offer of, the option of the specific retail coupled with the office to make it work and for the benefit of all of downtown. I understand my colleague's motion and their rationale, and I'm not here to dispute it, just to say what I think might, in my opinion, be best for, for downtown. So I will vote accordingly.
Any other comments in discussion? Everyone clear on the motion to approve and the conditions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, as outlined by Mayor Pro Tim, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass 4-1. Congratulations, sir. So let me skip through all those items I told you have been removed from the agenda at this time. And the next item that will be heard is new business. The first item under new business is the Public Works Fleet Replacements, ITB 26-007 and 26-008. Director Sasevich, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is sort of like a repeat from last week. We were waiting on some pricing from state contract, although it's been for you guys last week. We're requesting two Ford Rangers, um, excuse me. We went through state contract and the bid process. State contract was more expensive for the Ford Rangers, so we're going with the bid that was submitted previously. And the F-550 that we're going to replace is cheaper on state contract. So we're requesting move forward with state contract. These three vehicles are replacing, two vehicles are 17 years old and one that is 23 years old. As part of the fiscal year 2026 budget as well.
That it?
That's it. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Director Sasevich? Well, thank you, sir. Well done. Appreciate you saving taxpayer money. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not for this item, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this matter, now is your chance. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. We do have a motion to approve the Public Works Fleet Replacement, ITB 26007 and 26008, in consideration of the purchase of two 2025 Ford Ranger crew cab trucks in the amount totaling $99,006 to Billy Howell Ford for the purchase of a 2004 Ford. I'll skip the details there. And another one totaling $92,056 to Wade Ford through state contract, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Do we have a motion to approve by Councilman Mitchell? Do we have a second?
We have a second with a friendly to change that to a 2024 vehicle, not a 2004.
Oh, yes, that would be better for us.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
No wonder it came in cheaper. I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it passes unanimously, so we'll move on to the next item, which is contract and purchase approval for fiscal year 2026 tree planting.
This is a combined project, actually. This is starting, we're finishing up the western end of the Web Bridge Road corridor by the bridge. So we're going to plant 80, 80 trees along that corridor in that section, basically from the Greenway to Alfreda High School. So that's part one of that with Russell Landscape. And then we also have some replacements to do along Kilmer Bridge Road and Rucker Road as well. And that's going to be part of our annual replenishment. Either they got hit by somebody, or they just didn't make it, and we're going to put the rights of species back. So it's through our on-call vendor.
All right. So do we have any questions for Director Sasevich? Councilman Hypes has a question.
Director, we've got on the Web Bridge corridor on the east side of 400, the T-Sploss project over there is in excess of $37 million, according to our website. Is this part of that $37 million, or is this in addition to? Because those are T-Splossed. Is this T-Splossed?
Yes, it is T-Sploss funds.
Okay.
So it is part of that, or the allocation. I don't remember colleagues, I think the way the online works is what has occurred via PO. A purchase order has been issued, so this would be in addition to that.
Be in addition?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'd have to double-check that. I'll get back to you on that, but it's, usually it's whatever's been issued as a purchase order.
Okay. And I think the 37 was the budgeted figure.
Then it's part of that. Then if it's just a budgeted figure, then it's part of that, all in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward, talk about the tree planting, now's your chance. Don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council on this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the council to please approve the award of the contract and purchase approval to Russell Landscape for the fiscal year 2026 tree planting in the amount not to exceed $190,645.11 for the purchase, installation, and watering of trees at the newly constructed Web Bridge Road corridor improvements. Alfreda High School to West Wind Lane, and for tree replacement at Rucker Road, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, and a second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you.
So we'll move right along to the invitation to bid 26-006, repair and maintenance of bridges and guardrails. Once again, Director Sasevich.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
G-DOT every other year issues out their inspection reports for the bridges. We then follow up that inspection report by hiring a vendor to do the structural design drawings that need to be done to repair anything that's associated with the inspections that came out. So a lot of times you have piles and columns that need to be repaired, concrete has spalled away, there's erosion issues. So this is all part of that project. Another thing as well is we're painting guardrails that have eroded, eroded over the time along Mansell Road, as well as painting the undercarriage of some of the bridges as well, to prolong their life expectancies. So we have nine bridges in total that we're repairing, and we had three bids that came in with the low bid from Masana Construction at $615,5854. And we've done work with Masana the last several years, so they're used to the way we operate, we're used to them, and they can get the work done in a timely manner.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Director Sasevich on this item? Councilman Hypes?
Is this coming out of the capital fund or T-Sploss funds?
T-Sploss. It's, yeah.
If it was in here, I apologize. I didn't, I'm curious which bucket.
It's got T-Sploss funds, so that twovel, that first line item of $340,000 is T-Sploss. And the second line item is LRA, which was a state, similar to ALMA. It was additional funds that the state had, that they gave us, that we could choose it towards bridge maintenance, sidewalks, milling research, et cetera.
Thank you.
Councilman Mitchell?
Pete, thank you. Does this include the, I've noticed even on, even on Rucker Road, some of the guardrails that had been painted, they need touching up, and some of the browns come off and stuff like that. It's been not that long, but it's already needing a refresh paint job. Does this include those?
This does not include that, but it's on the list.
Okay.
This is Mansell, which has been on it for a while.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll add that to the list for sure.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
If you'd like to speak on this item, now's your chance. Still don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll go ahead and close public comment on this item. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the council to approve the bid 26006, repair and maintenance of bridges and guardrails, consideration and approval of the award of a contract and purchase approval for the invitation to bid 26006 to Masana Construction Incorporated for the repair and maintenance of multiple bridges and guardrails in the amount not to exceed $615,854, with the authorization, authorization of the mayor and council to execute all necessary documents.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Pete. So we'll move on from Public Works to the Police Department. We have an invitation to bid 26-009, fiscal year 2025, police and fire fleet replacements. Police and fire. Pardon me.
Doing both jobs tonight, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration tonight, we have the request to replace 24 of our fire and police fleet vehicles. The average age of these vehicles is over 12 years, and the average mileage on each of these vehicles is over 122,000 miles. So all of these vehicles that are being considered, all of these went out to bid. And so the request is for the replacement for these vehicles, and also for the upfitting of these vehicles.
Do we have any questions? Must have done a great job. Nobody had any questions.
I have excellent staff, sir.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak in police and fire fleet replacements, you got one last chance to speak up. I'll close public comment, seeing no one come forward. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to council award invitation to bid 26-009 for fiscal year 25, police and fire fleet replacements to Hardy Chevrolet Buick GMC, the Sewell Family of Companies, and Wild Rose Chevrolet for 24 vehicles in an amount not to exceed $1,105,000. $1,105,374.20, and an additional amount of $376,368.15 for the uplift of the 24 vehicles with Dana Safety Supply under the uplift contract, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
We have, we have a motion. I believe the second was Mayor Pro Tim Markle. Any discussion? Well done, sir. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So we will move right along. Next item is the purchase approval for police TASER replacements.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the, as you know, the TASER contract for our current TASERS is up at the end of November, November 30th, so we're requesting the replacement, and this is also an upgrade at this time for our current TASER fleet. We are also requesting the addition of 18 additional TASERS to add in for the jail staff as well, when we get them fully staffed. We're moving, we would be moving from the TASER sevens to the TASER tens, which basically there's, it's a completely new technology. They have double the effective range of the current TASERS, and they operate significantly differently than the current stuff that we use, and the cost of these is $810,912 over a five-year contract.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions for Chief Lingman? Councilman Mitchell.
So just for our entertainment, the, the current TASERS reach what kind of distance?
25 feet.
And these new TASERS will reach?
These will go to 45, 45 feet. So if you, if you think about the length of the engagement, so probably the best example that we would have from earlier this year, from the shooting that we had, the officer-involved shooting, this is a situation where, had we had these new TASERS, we might have been able to avoid actually engaging with a firearm, because we could have possibly ended that situation with the TASER because of the distance that we were able to cover. So it's one of those things that, these technologies are constantly evolving and emerging, and TASER has fundamentally changed their technology with how they actually propel these, the cartridges now going forward. It's a different thing, and so it just gives us more options, gives us a more distance to be able to offset, and the more distance that we can have, the more time that we have to make a decision, and ultimately the better decisions that we can make, because we're not forced to be in such close quarters when we make these decisions to engage.
Wow. And does it lose any intensity with the distance?
No, well, everything loses intensity with the distance, but that's what it's rated for. Honestly, it's, it's limited by the length of the wires that conduct the electricity, but they're, they're basically guaranteed to cover that 45-foot distance. You probably honestly have a little bit more distance that you can cover, but they're rated for the 45.
Wow. I can think of an incident in Atlanta with the Windies where if there had been a 45-foot rate TASER, that, that whole situation might have been a lot.
Yeah, the, the technology's incredible. I think about when I started and not even having this as an option to what we have today. It's, it's amazing how much harm we can save to officers and to the public when we have to use force.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's good news.
Councilman Hypes, I believe you had a question.
And are we buying the, the entirety in the first year, or are they, are we buying a portion in each year?
Yes, sir. No, this would be, this would be the entire replacement at the same time. We would just switch from one weapon system to the new weapon system at one time.
And what's the total number that we're buying?
The total number is 160. We were basically, we're adding eight, we're adding 18 more than we currently have in our existence.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have, have any other questions for Chief Lingman? Thank you again, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
Not for this item, sir.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak on the TASERS, now's your chance. Seeing that, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I make a motion, council approve, purchase, and award of contract to Axon Enterprises for repl, for replacement TASERS, associated equipment, advanced training, and extended warranty through Axon TASER 10 certification at a total cost of $810,912 over a five-year term, with the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion about this item, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move right along to the contract approval for Jagannu Smart Lighting. Mr. Lagerblum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to tell a little story with this one and then see where you all want to go with it. We embarked upon this journey to find a lighting system for our downtown that would brighten the downtown up. That was the direction that we received after we had the unfortunate homicide occur downtown, was to, was to see if we could increase the brightness of, of the pedestrian experience in the downtown. So we went out and searched for different, either light bulbs, light fixtures, what we could put out there that would be a different brightness level than what is currently out there. From time to time, and I'll be the first to, to say that we've landed on this as a, as a potential pilot for our city, in that, for the first time ever, the same technology can be put into the field in one lighting head, as opposed to being a light fixture within cameras hanging off of poles, or other data collecting things hanging off of poles. You actually just can build all that into the fixture itself, and when you put the new fixture on top of the pole, it's a, kind of like a plug-and-play. You get all those things, and you don't have that junky look in the sky of, of just a bunch of things hanging off the same pole. And we recognized that the cost was in line with just replacing what a normal replacement of a camera would be, and so we do maintain a budget for camera replacements. Ironically, if we move forward with this because of the enhancement to the pedestrian experience, my recommendation, as I emailed you earlier today, would be less of use of those camera replacement funds and allow T-Splus to be a funder for this initiative as well. Those funds, as you know, have run stronger than anticipated, and we've had collections beyond what was anticipated in almost all the collections that, at least I've reviewed since I've been here. So I think funding is, is a different source and one that would, we've got to find uses for, for anyway. I probably did myself no favors when I brought that light fixture into the city council meeting and had it sitting on this table, thinking everybody's going to absolutely love it, and maybe the opposite happened, and the opposite happened, and said, what is that, and what's that going to look like up in the sky? So I wanted to bring back this, this contract, this service agreement, because we do want to, we would like to run this pilot. Like, I, I do believe that we would be very satisfied with, number one, the lighting that we would see, and also the benefit of the enhanced data collection in our downtown, ability to count number of people on the town green, for example, so we can really have some ideas as to what our special events are drawing into that area, and what the, what the movement, population movement trend really is. So I think that we get there, but as I've been talking with Jagannu and Comcast, and this is sort of one of the benefits you get when you decide to engage with a incubated kind of startup technology company. This one, by the way, was incubated over in Peachtree Corners in the, in the Curiosity Lab. It is Israeli-based startup, but one of the things you get is a whole lot of flexibility. So what I asked them for was, if I present this, and if the city council says, yes, we'd like to move forward with the pilot, what I'd like to do is I'd like to be able to at least lock in the 2025 pricing before we get to the first of the year. But it was very easy to discuss with them that if, to answer that question, because I guess I still have a question too, as to what is it truly going to look like when it gets up on a pole? They were in agreement when I asked if, if, if we could move forward with installing up to two, and that would mean either one or two, depending on what we chose. To install one or two, they would not be the fixtures that have all the technology in them. They would be what we call the non-smart lights, and there's several non-smart lights here that just are, are lighting, but no extra things in there, because you don't need a camera at every pole. But to install two of those very quickly, just would take an electrician, almost in less than a day, we could have those two put up, and then let you all see that, and let you all see it in the field, let you see it in Alpharetta, let you make sure that before we were to move forward with the corridor, and I do want to clarify, the corridor is actually defined as Highway 9 between Academy Street and Old Milton Parkway. The staff reporter, the title was, said Marietta Street. But the state has started to work significantly with this particular company over in Peachtree Corners, and they've had very good success converting their downtown to this same fixture. So I've seen the proof of concept, I've seen it in action. I've talked to other city leaders who absolutely are thrilled with the technology and how they've been able to interface with it, so we've gotten good feedback. But I think because there was some thought there, if you all wanted to approve this tonight and make a contingent on installing up to two, and then requiring that we bring it back to a work session before actually executing a full move forward, then I think that that's something that they would consent to. I'd be happy to do that. I think we could do it quickly, and it would at least take that question of, what is it in fact going to look like when it gets on a pole? What's it going to look like? So summarizing, what I'd ask you to consider doing tonight is going ahead and approving this to lock in the prices, but then with direction and a contingency, ask that we hold the contract and purchase up to two non-smart fixtures, have them installed, and then bring it back to you all in a work session for a discussion and the final green light before we move forward with the whole corridor. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Hypes?
Mr. Lagerblum, if we approve this and they are installed, would you install them side by side so we get a sense of amassing of what they look like when they're collected together, and how much light they put off when they're collected together, or would you separate them and put them some distance apart?
So I'm open to suggestions either way, or I'm even open to saying, I believe it could be both, that I believe we could install them side by side and let you all look at that, and then five days later, we could take one down and put the old head back on and move that to a different location, and Alpharetta lets you see what it looked like with a further distance apart between the, between the two of them. So I think it truly is what functionally amounts to that head you saw. So really, it's the removal of a light fixture that's out there, the placing of a new one on, connecting a couple wires, and it's where we need to be for you all to take a look at it. So this, I don't believe installation's complicated, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. I've, I understand, and I didn't fully understand that we didn't catch someone's license plate, and I think the public needs to understand that, because the lighting was so dim in the city that it couldn't read a license, or a license plate reader could not read it because the light was so dim. And that was the impetus for this. Is that correct?
It is, it is true that we had to use somebody else's camera image to identify that tag. You are correct. Our cameras did not, our cameras were not what was used to be able to help solve that crime.
I like the idea of doing two and, and letting the public see them as well. It's not going to change the beauty of the fixture, but the functionality adds to safety in our downtown and things like that. There, there are some things that are, you know, more important. But I did receive an email from a citizen who's quite concerned, and this is floating around out there, that, that there are candidates who are supporting, and that the city is supporting this 15-minute city concept, and that's basically where everything's within 15 minutes away, or within a 15 minutes distance, and their concern was with this light, is it going to lead to all that? And so this whole conspiracy that's going around, and I've heard it more than once, I don't know of any candidate that supports that. The city's not supporting a 15-minute concept. It's where it gets rid of all automobiles within that 15-minute area. It's just, it's just a conspiracy theory, and these lights have nothing to do with it. Our council has not ever talked about a 15-minute city. This is for large urban areas like Paris, and they want, they want the doctor, they want the office, they, they want to do away with all large office buildings. We love office in Alpharetta. We, we love commuters to come here and eat here and stay here, so this whole concept has nothing to do with this. So I wanted to clarify that for, because I know this person is not the only one that, that feels this way and has heard these rumors.
Interesting.
So would you also confirm that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Gosh, I've managed cities now for 25 years, and that's the first time I've heard of a 15-minute city. I've talked about time in, in the context of walkability to a park, like, we do want to be a 10-minute city when it comes to walking to parks, but no, 15-minute city in that context, that wouldn't even make good planning sense. So I don't, no, nobody's, nobody's discussing that amongst your, your staff, and we're not bringing that concept or recommendations forward.
I, I appreciate your, your recommendation of adding two, and, and like Councilmember Hypes, I would love to see them close in proximity to see what the light glow is, and also to see how they, how they work within the city and move on from there, and maybe invite the public to look at them and see if they feel safer or whatever with them.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brady?
Mr. Lingman, just to set an expectations for brightness, what's currently there as far as wattage or luminance versus what we're about to see?
I'm going to have to ask Pete to come to the podium. He probably knows this off the top of his head. There's, start to talk lumens and Kelvin and colors.
Now we're getting technical.
Brightness and...
It's going to be in temperature, so typically it's 3,000, okay, Kelvin, for the bright, brightness, the white of the gold. This is 27. It is custom out there. Mayor, you and down, you may recall, we were going through the city center and dealing with everything. 3,000 was considered too bright, and they wanted a, it's a custom bulb here in city center and along Main Street between Marietta Street and Academy Street. So it ranges between 27, 28. They're completely consistent, but it's below the, at the normal, which is 3,000 you see throughout the city.
And I think the follow-up then, is the reason that we're interested in trying this pilot is because this bulb itself is changeable to whatever we decide to set it to. So if we get it out there at a certain color and brightness and it's not bright enough, we have the ability to cause that to become brighter. I don't think we'll necessarily do it, but if you want to change them all to green on St. Patrick's Day, you can change them all to green on St. Patrick's Day.
So that kind of solves that soft white versus cool white or whatever.
This will have a full spectrum, a full LED spectrum of options, as opposed to the single color that we have today.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Lagerblum? Thanks, sir. I appreciate your thorough following up on this. I do think it's important for us to get it right eventually, and we need to take the time to get it right before we spend any money. That being said, Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
But if you'd like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. Don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion this evening to approve the contract approval for Jagannu Smart Lighting as presented by Mr. Lagerblum.
Just please make reference to the fact that it is contingent upon the two being installed in a returning to work session prior to your final direction to move forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Second, by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Look forward to seeing them installed and seeing what they actually look like downtown. Next item, last one on our new business, is resolution temporarily suspending bondsman permit requirement. Ms. Swine, would you please read that resolution?
A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Alfreda, Georgia, temporarily suspending the enforcement of the permit requirement for bondsmen under Section 10-367 of the City Code of Ordinances, providing for the acceptance of bail from bondsman approved in accordance with OCGA 17650 by the Fulton County Sheriff and for other purposes.
Mayor and council, very quickly, this, this item kind of cleans us up so that we could open the jail and actually have bondsman, bond people come and write bonds. Bonding out is, is one op, there's many options on how to get out of jail. One is a cash bond, the other is using a bonding company. State statute controls how bonding companies are permitted to operate in the county, and that authority is actually given to the sheriff of every county in Georgia to come up with a list of approved bonds companies. The sheriff in Fulton County has done that, and uniquely, the criteria that the sheriff used is the same criteria that's in state statute to select which bonding companies are authorized to come to the jail and write bonds. We found a very old ordinance in Alpharetta. It's found in ordinance 10367, like, dates back into the 80s, when we were operating a jail once before, and, yes, and calls for us to have our own permit requirements in addition to the sheriff's permit requirement, amongst other things that were written very specifically that made a lot of sense in the 1980s that don't necessarily make sense in 2025. In consultation with the city attorney, we felt as if the easiest way to move forward and easiest way to just bring our, our, our practice into compliance with the state statute is simply to suspend the ordinance that we have on the book. simply to suspend the ordinance that we have on the books and say that for the time being, we are satisfied, as state statute allows for, that any bonds person that sheriff has approved to write bonds in Fulton County has the authority to be able to come to Alpharetta and write a bond at our jail. I published the list for you all to take a look at. Practically, maybe one or two or three of those companies would ever make their way to Alpharetta. Most of them are headquartered downtown, and they probably sit right next to Wright Street. That's where they do most of their work. But this is a way to be able to move forward without having to either rescind the law, tinker with that law. Eventually, we'll have to tinker with it, and then when we tinker with it, we'll bring it back and then we'll unsuspend it. But for the time being, so that this doesn't get in the way of holding up the jail opening, adopting this resolution just gives us that, that ability to have bondspeople off of the sheriff's list. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Lagerblum? Thanks, sir. I appreciate you and Molly working on this. Do not want to delay the opening of the city jail any longer than we have to. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not for this item, sir.
However, just like every other time, you can come forward and speak on this item if you'd like. Seeing no one come, I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would offer a motion to approve the resolution as presented this evening by Ms. Molly Eswin and Chris Lagerblum for temporarily suspending bondsman permit requirements.
Have a motion? Do we have a second? Have a second by Councilman Hypes? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to public comment. So anyone from the public who's been sitting here waiting for your opportunity to speak, now you have one last chance.
I have two public comment cards, Mr. Mayor.
Well, would you please call them forward?
Yes. The first speaker is Lance Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Lance Reed, and I am an Alpharetta resident, Alpharetta business owner, and a, and we are a service-disabled, veteran-owned, small business headquartered right here in the city. In December of last year, after the city approved the Tesla vehicles for the police fleet, we met with key stakeholders and were asked to provide pricing for two Level 2 chargers. We suggested the city consider Level 3 fast chargers, better suited for fleet operations, but were told they were likely cost prohibitive. When we explained that Georgia Power's make-ready program would cover 100% of infrastructure costs at no cost to the city, we were told the city had already attempted for nearly a year to engage Georgia Power with no success, and they were not interested in spending any more time on that option. We asked if we could reach out to our Georgia Power contacts on the city's behalf, and within seven days, Georgia Power approved the site, and we received an email thanking us for the assistance and quote, "removing the logjam for the city with Georgia Power." This saved the city over six figures in infrastructure costs for the EV chargers. Over the following months, we provided data, site plans, multiple proposals, and configurations. Then in March, we received an email and were asked to submit pricing for four fast chargers. Can we get a new proposal from you for the max-capacity charger installation, was what the email said. We provided chargers prior to that, up to 640 kilowatts, so we asked for specifics on what max capacity referred to, as well as explained that our chargers are dual-plug chargers, which means that they would provide charging, four chargers, up to eight spaces. The answer we received was, we're not doing tractor-trailers, indicating that this was merely continued information gathering and not a procurement process. Months passed without answers, then we learned the city approved a $260,000 purchase of four Tesla chargers. No invitation to bid per procurement policy, no RFP per procurement policy, no specifications for comparison, and no opportunity for local businesses to compete. Tesla provides single-port chargers. Our solutions use dual-port chargers, meaning four Tesla units support four vehicles while our four units support eight vehicles, doubling the capacity. Our like-for-like proposal would have saved the city nearly $80,000 upfront, plus tens of thousands of dollars in reduced processing fees over the next decade. Tesla is widely documented as the most expensive in the industry for credit card fees and revenue share. Yet this was apparently never considered throughout this entire process or when considering pricing. In addition, it was stated at a June council meeting that payback of these chargers would be 18 to 20 months. This is far from accurate, and I am puzzled how this figure was even calculated for Tesla chargers when no mention of Tesla fees was apparently even considered. In closing, this is not about one company over another, it is about process, taxpayer value, and transparency. As a resident, a business owner, and a disabled veteran...
Sir, you have three minutes, so you need to wrap it up.
I'm simply asking for a formal competitive RFP and allow local and service-disabled businesses to have the opportunity to compete. I appreciate the council's commitment to public leadership and recognize the significant time and effort each of you dedicate to serving our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, sir.
And I have some information here if that, to be left, if someone related to any of that.
Feel free to leave it on the table. I'm sure we'll review it. You said you had two public comments. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Violet Purcell. And those are all the cards I have this evening, Mayor.
Hello, councilman. My name is Violet Purcell, and I'm a Winward resident within Alpharetta. If you might remember me from the two city council meetings back, and I'm here again to address all of you on behalf of the youth of Alpharetta. So on my Instagram, I posted a poll asking, what should I talk about next at city council? What are the youth's concerns? Of the options, it was talk about construction more, youth mental health, culture, and public safety. Of over 100 votes, the one that gained over 50% of the votes was youth mental health. Councilman, last year, around the same time, a young man, no, boy, took his own life at Chattahoochee High School. Over this summer, a young man, another boy, happened to take his life at, who attended Northview High School. This is an epidemic. This is just not a one-off chance. Just because a suicide has not happened at Alpharetta High School or in recent date does not mean it won't happen. Via my research, I have not found a public program that Alpharetta supports within youth mental health. There are certain groups that Alpharetta supports to fund, slight funds to, but via the public funding page and the report, the funds are not major, and there are more funds to opioids and other addresses, other issues that need to be addressed, which is very important, but I do believe that youth mental health should be addressed to the fuller extent, along with opioids and other general issues. So on account of the youth of Alpharetta, we are all very concerned, and we would be looking into and very interested in working with you as a representative of SLN, Student Leadership North, and part of the SOS Ambassador Program. We would like to work with you to try to expand the youth mental health programs to provide and to prevent a suicide within Alpharetta High School and more suicides within the Alpharetta area. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate you coming forward. If you take a moment, I'd like to let you know that we had the North Fulton Municipal Association meeting last week, and so I appreciate your passion for what you're doing. Fulton County is actually the governmental entity which is providing mental health services in the entire county. It's difficult for a city the size of Alpharetta or Milton individually to host those types of facilities. And so there is an effort by Fulton County to open up a mental health facility on North Point Parkway. They'll be having, hopefully, a grand opening within the next six months, I believe is the time they gave us last week. So we have been diligently working on those efforts and supporting those efforts, but we have to work through the existing mental health infrastructure that helps the whole county, not just one individual city. So just thought you might want to know that. Appreciate you bringing it up. That being said, do we not have any other public comment cards?
No, sir. We do not.
However, if anyone here would like to come forward, you have one last chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have any reports this evening? Seeing none? I don't believe we have an executive session this evening, do we?
We do not.
Excellent. So I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilman Brady. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Look forward to seeing you next time.
Excuse me, councilman?
I got you, Ray.
I got the potential license for the school where we're, where they're taking vouchers, and I got the points for getting a...
It's on the calendar. I was just trying to think.
Come on up.
I just got, uh...
Yeah.
Thank you.